Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Deputy Mayor Garcia and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the republic, and to the one nation, the republic of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. Do a quick roll call. Councilmember Morosco?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez? Deputy Mayor Garcia?
Here.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We'll move on to proclamations for Code Compliance Month, and I would ask any staff who want to join me at the front to please do so. Clean. It is truly appreciated by all of us, and it is my honor to recognize Code Compliance Month and proclaim October 2024 as Code Compliance Month here in the city of Escondido. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and City Management for this proclamation. Code Compliance is a division in the Development Services Department. Our goal is to improve the quality of life and the environment, to protect property and to join city staff in all departments in addressing the needs of the community. Special thanks to our team and all the hard work and dedication. Thank you.
You guys want to come down for a photo? All right, that brings us to the presentations portion of the meeting, and I would invite anyone up for the Grand Avenue Construction Project Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jonathan Schabel, and I'm the City Engineer. And I'm joined tonight by Marissa Padilla, Associate Engineer, and Jennifer Shoenack, Director of Economic Development. And tonight, we're going to discuss the Grand Avenue Vision Project Phase Two. And I just want to start off by saying that this, the three of us are up here tonight, but it's actually a big team of us working on this project. We've got consultants, we've got city staff, everybody from communications outreach to the technical staff, the inspections, construction managers. And we are all aware that this project will impact the businesses and those who visit the downtown, and we're doing our best to try to reduce those impacts. And I think we're going to show that tonight in some of these slides. So first, I want to give a little bit of the background on this project. So this project actually goes all the way back to 2015, and there were initially a group of business owners and property owners approached the city and said they wanted to revitalize the downtown area. So there were some public meetings held in 2017, and out of those came these visions for the project. And you can see before you, create a vibrant pedestrian-friendly downtown area, provide wider sidewalks and outdoor dining areas, improve parking and calm traffic. And so just going through a little bit of the background and the chronology, as I mentioned, this 2017 was the first public meetings, and then council ultimately approved the grand vision plan in 2018. In 2020, design concepts were shared with the community. City Council approved the SEQA environmental document and specific alignment plan in 2021. And through, partially funded by a grant from Sandag, construction of Phase One was completed in 2022. In September of 2023, the city had already begun work on Phase Two of the project, and we published a survey regarding those improvements for Phase Two of the project. Then earlier this year, February of this year, the City Council awarded the construction contract for Phase Two, with construction set to start September 30th, which is after the Cruising Grand season. So what is the Grand Vision Plan? So what you're seeing on the screen here is the entirety of what was approved by council back in 2018, and it is included in the SEQA document. So that extends from Escondido Boulevard on the west all the way to Juniper Street on the east. And because of funding limitations, we had to break this project up into three pieces or three phases. So here's Phase One, and obviously, you know, this is completed already, and those pictures show the completed project. The map at the top kind of shows the extents. We only were able to, because of limited funding, we're able, only able to widen one side of the block from Maple to Broadway. However, we did add the string lights and the decorative streetlights from Maple all the way to Calmia as part of the Phase One project. Phase Two is the project that just started construction, and you can see that we're extending those string lights and decorative streetlights from Calmia to Juniper. And we're also widening both sides of the sidewalk between Broadway and Juniper, and we're picking up that south side that we didn't get in Phase One between Maple and Broadway. And in addition, probably one of the more prominent features of the project are traffic circles. So we're installing a traffic circle at Broadway and another one at Calmia Street. And Phase Three is what you see there, the remainder of the Grand Vision Plan, and that extends from Maple to Escondido Boulevard. And of course, we'll be extending the string lighting, widening the sidewalks on that block and installing a traffic circle at Maple Street. Now, that project is partially funded. We want to thank Congressman Peters for giving us $1 million in federal funds, and we are, staff is actively pursuing additional funds to complete the Phase Three project.
Construction began Monday on the block between Calmia Street and Juniper Street. One of the first items of work included the removal of the diseased trees shown in this image. Trees within the limits of the project will be removed to allow for the construction of the improvements. When possible, healthy and appropriately sized trees will be replanted within the project footprint. In total, 60 trees will be planted within the widened sidewalk area. The city's contractor for the project is Nationwide General Construction Services, and they have already proven to be up to the challenges of this complex project. The city has hired HOPE Consulting to provide construction management services for the project. These services include full-time construction inspection, as well as material testing services and public outreach support. Construction is estimated to be completed in spring of next year. The working hours for the project are 6:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. This map shows the limits of the Grand Vision Phase Two project, beginning on the east at Juniper Street and progressing west to Maple Street. The project improvements will be completed in three sub-phases, broken up by block. Construction has begun on Subphase One between Juniper Street and Calmia Street. This phase is anticipated to extend through November 8th. Subphase Two extends between Calmia Street and Broadway and has an anticipated construction schedule of November 12th through January 3rd. Subphase Three extends between Broadway and Maple Street and has an estimated construction schedule of January 6th through February, February 28th. A fourth sub-phase will include the final finishes, such as decorative sandblasting, final paving, signing and striking across the full length of the project. These sub-phases are intended to minimize the impact of road closures and construction activity on local businesses and residents. I would like to emphasize that the dates shown are an estimated schedule for the sequencing of work. These dates do not account for unforeseen weather delays, differing field conditions or material supply issues. Businesses will be kept updated on any changes to the construction schedule. Zooming in on Subphase One, the green dash line depicts pedestrian access for the current work zone. The contractor will provide a minimum four-foot-wide pedestrian path of travel along the perimeter of the construction zone. Shown is an image of the pedestrian walkway taken earlier this week, on the top right. This map shows a pedestrian path of travel for Subphase Two, and this one shows the pedestrian path of travel for final Subphase Three. Several measures have been implemented to protect businesses during construction, including maintaining pedestrian access to the front door of each business at all times. The contractor is also required to perform boring for the new light pole foundations after working hours in order to reduce the impact of this disruptive work. Informational signs have been posted around the construction zone to notify customers that businesses are open during construction and to direct them to the project webpage for more information. Shown is an image of one of those signs. Businesses and residents will be provided with regular updates on the progress of construction. This will allow businesses to anticipate when construction will impact their frontage. Updates will be provided to downtown businesses via the city's email list serve and posted to the city's webpage. This, the project webpage includes an interactive constructive, construction map shown that highlights public parking options around downtown. You can click into this map online to find, find out more about the improvements shown. A concerted public outreach effort has been undertaken by the city. City staff attended three quarterly downtown business associated, association meetings as early as November 2022 to provide information specific to the Grand Vision Phase Two project. Key stakeholders, including downtown business owners and residents, were surveyed in November 2022 and September 2023 to receive their input on the development of the project. A construction notification was mailed out by the city's contractor in mid-September. Door-to-door business outreach was performed on September 30th and 20th in anticipation of the start of construction. During this outreach effort, businesses were provided with the material regarding the impacts of the project, as well as informational flyers for them to distribute to their customers. A project email and help, helpline have been set up for efficient response and tracking of public questions.
The economic development team is committed to supporting our business community throughout this project. We're collaborating with the engineering team and the consultants to make sure that information is being shared at a regular cadence and that we're adding additional information and wayfinding signage. So some of the additional tools that we're putting out into the field to support our business community and to assist visitors are directional signage to the nearest parking. Downtown requires additional wayfinding signage so that when people are driving down Grand, they are aware of those parking lots behind the buildings. And several of the business owners that I've spoken to are already creating arrangements to notify their customers that they can have access through the back of their building to make it easier for customers who, for example, would like ADA parking access and easier entry into their building. We also will have directional signage to walking paths. So right now, we have some A-frame signs out there, but we'll be adding additional signage. We'll also be putting more signage on the parking lots themselves to designate those public parking areas and signaling where people can walk through businesses and through the buildings to get to Grand Avenue, because you don't always have to walk through the alleys to get to the front of those stores. We are creating informational and educational signage that can go inside the windows of some of those vacant storefronts. So as people walk by, they can use the QR codes and learn more about what the project is going to look like and the timelines. So these images that you are seeing on the slides tonight and that are also available on our website, we want to put them in the field to allow people greater access to that information. We have this QR code on signs currently out on Grand Avenue that directs people to our webpage, where people can sign up for those email newsletter alerts. And we now have the technology on our new city website to allow for text alerts as well. We'll be doing weekly website updates. It's really fun to see what's going on in the field. So we're collaborating with the construction consultant to make sure that we get those fun pictures up of the construction equipment and what businesses are doing out in the field. We will have those email notifications, and then something very exciting coming up is the public art request for proposals for a big sculpture that will be going in the middle of Grand and Broadway to brighten up that roundabout. So we're doing everything we can with the federal budget we have to help promote the businesses downtown and to drive visitors to those businesses. So we'll be continuing the Visit Escondido account. This is a very active social media account on Facebook and especially on Instagram. The account does collaborations with social media influencers and publications such as San Diego Magazine, that Gardner more than 14,000 views for businesses downtown. We're working with the Escondido Mall and that big electronic sign they have off the 15 to drive visitors downtown. There will be street pole banners and also street banners directing people to frequent downtown, social media ad boosts for downtown events and businesses. So we're really encouraging businesses that use social media to post frequently. One neat anecdote is one business that is in the area currently under construction is doing hard hat videos showcasing what's going on downtown so their followers can support them with extra sales during this time. And we're working closely with the Downtown Business Association to support and promote their events as well, and I have a full list of those on the next slide. So here are some downtown events that are happening. We encourage the community to go to these events, think about your shopping list for the upcoming holiday season. So there will be the Grand Avenue Festival. I always do holiday shopping there. A free art scavenger hunt they're starting this year, a trick-or-treat on Grand. The Vet Fest and Parade will still be happening downtown with city support to make sure that people are still aware that that event is going on. Small Business Saturday will happen again. Holiday Lights and Decor will continue downtown. There will be a Community and Unity event hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. There will also be a continuation of the annual Christmas Parade, the Chocolate Festival in February, and there is now a new Art Month in April. Since this construction will be going into the spring, we really want to make sure we're supporting events later in 2025 as well as this upcoming holiday season.
Thank you for your time. That concludes our presentation.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Can we go back to the first picture?
We do have one member in the public. I didn't know if you--
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Leah, you can go for it. Yes.
I thought you guys were going to finish this first. Okay. My name is Leah Peshotu. I have a store on Calmia and Grand. It's a gift store. We've been there 11 years, and I did speak two weeks ago on this subject. And the city has taken away my right to enjoy a good business this holiday season. You are all aware of how a retail business works. The fourth quarter is the culmination and highlight of the retail experience. It puts a business in the black and starts the new year and the buns to follow an absolute boost. It's really vital. I expressed on Wednesday, 9/18, how a store starts to build up its Christmas inventory and gift merchandise to accommodate the very busy season. The buildup of merchandise is very costly and is only recuperated after the events by the events of the season. And I know we talked about, you guys talked about the Escondido Street Fair, the Black Friday and small business, but they will be diminished. It will not be as usual. Parking availability is imperative as well. We will be experiencing early darkness in just a short time, which will not be comfortable for older customers, which we have many. No one will park far away from my shop after dark with the added issues of safety from the homeless population in our neighborhood. This may appear to be trivial to some of you, but I assure you, this is not a trivial issue for me. We can all agree that there will be a loss of business due to all the rerouting of traffic, parking, availability, extreme noise, dirt, dust and utter chaos. And 25% of a business year is in December. That's incredible. What percentage of loss is acceptable and sustainable before the business is, is in red and cannot be recouped? Is it 10%? Is it 20%? If I don't have that 25 to 30% in the holiday, I will go under. It feels extremely disheartening to be so invisible to the City Council, the Engineering Department and the DBA to have put aside and disregard our business needs to thrive and succeed in this vital fourth quarter, our holiday season. It feels dismissive, dismissive of one's livelihood. I would like to ask a couple of questions. Who benefits from having the construction during an important holiday season? Who kept the businesses from hearing about this at much earlier date, since Phase Two was known three months or even earlier than that? We were only notified September 15th, two weeks before the construction. Why weren't the local businesses included in the discussions of startups and how each phase of Phase Two would be developed? And lastly, why was the construction project postponed until Cruising Grand ended at the end of September and the construction ending at the beginning of Cruising Grand startup? It will feel like a ghost town with the closure of Grand Avenue between Calmia and Juniper. The people traffic will be significantly lessened, especially on Sundays. Do I still stay open and pay a payroll expense? The restaurants are very important for our business.
In fairness to the other speakers, I know you're almost there.
I am, and you agreed that you, Mayor White, that you would give me a time to finish when we spoke on the phone.
Three minutes, yeah. Please just make it quick, in fairness to the other speakers.
I will. Thank you very much. So we are a business and play a major role on the street, yet we feel invisible. The Phase Two plans were only sent to us three days before construction on, of September 30th. So I don't know if the, if the phases are going to overlap, if Calmia from Valley Parkway to Second will be closed, which will totally cut, cut me off, and I don't have a back entrance. So, and I don't make appointments. So my store is going to be tremendously affected by this. And I would like to have a discussion with someone on how exactly this is going to work. I would like the construction between Calmia and Broadway delayed until after January, so I have a holiday season. I had no idea this was two weeks before. I can't stop my, my deliveries. Everything is there.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is anybody going to respond, or am I just dismissed?
No, that's part of what I was explaining to you when I came to VisiUs. We can't have dialogue with the public speakers.
Okay. All right. Will there ever be a dialogue? Will I ever be allowed to speak to someone?
I'm going to share, what's that? I'm going to share your contact information with Economic Development, and we'll make sure they, they get in contact with you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Is there any other, any other public comments?
Not on this item.
Okay. Can we go back to the slide with the first picture that said road closed? My, my biggest concern, yeah, right there. So my biggest concern with this is making sure people understand when they, especially when they come from out of town, making sure they understand that the road is closed, but the sidewalks are open. And this is what concerns me. When you pull up at the stop, you see road closed, detour, detour, and then back there in the corner, covered by the detour sign in smaller letters, is the we are open for business. So my question is, when, when can we expect the parking signs, the walking signs, the banners?
Excellent observation. We had the same observation, and those signs are in design right now. So as soon as they are completed and printed, they're actually going right here. We confirmed with the construction company that it will not impede safety for them to actually go in this area so that it's very clear where parking is and that businesses are still open on either side. So those are, signs are in design right now.
When do you think we could expect them to be up?
Great question. I need to double check. My estimate is three weeks, but I will, I will double check.
Okay. That's a, a little disappointing as the construction has already started, but we'll take what we can get with that. Are we considering putting a banner at the intersection of Escondido Boulevard and Maple so that people on Center City or on Escondido Boulevard can see the street is in fact open for business?
Yes. The locations where we have cross-the-street banners, we'll be putting those cross-the-street banners, and then we'll be doing light pole banners after the hero banners come down. And when we go to put up additional holiday banners, we'll put open-for-business banners downtown as well.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I know that this is something that a lot of people in the community have been asking for. On a similar note, I think if we could get, especially if we disseminate the information on social media, especially if we could put like a, just a simplified map or something where we could show residents or anybody on social media where it is that they're able to park, walkways, walk paths, or et cetera, just so that they know, you know, the business is still open, this is where you park, this is how you can navigate the downtown area. I think that would be really helpful because I've been asked by several people in the community for that. Thank you.
Again, thank you all very much for the presentation. It was very informative, the timeframe, timeline, going back to 2015 and how this process has been moving forward and the explanation as it's been out with, at the varying meetings that were held with the public, which explained the reason for the timeline that we had, in particular, to not lose the, the funding that was acquired or allocated for Phase Two of the project. And I know that we have steps and processes for things, designing of the signs, et cetera. We could probably design the sign after the meeting in five minutes, and we can go to Quick Prints and have it done by Friday. So I, I think that we, that could be expedited, and there's a way to do that and, and to diminish the impact of, of a three-week delay. So my suggestion. Thanks.
Sorry. Real quick, can you, city manager, please explain the reasoning on why we cannot postpone the construction?
There's, there's a multiple factors. Is that when the council made a decision back in the spring to move it to this period of time, we actually achieved economies of scale. If we start to adjust the contract, costs go up significantly. These monies are federal dollars, which are coming from the Reinvestment Act and need to be expensed on a very specific timeline. The challenge also is, as you heard, there's Phase Three coming. Those funds are actually, part of those funds have been allocated from the Congressional Office, and there's actually another potential tranche coming from the Congressional Office down the line. There, unfortunately, there's never a good time to do these types of construction, and it's going to be an impact, no matter what time of year, on some locations. I know we'll follow up with the business owner who spoke earlier. I, I know that we will do every effort we can to help reduce these impacts on the businesses. But there's specific timetables around the projects. There's also these large events, which impact the phasing even within this particular approach. One of those things is to get into the space and move through the spaces quickly. It's a very aggressive timetable. As you see, it's forecasted to be done by the end of February, but that forecast is again dependent upon the weather and how we do that, what, how we, how we, how successful we are in having a mild winter.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for that presentation, timely as this project has started and lots of social media activity and questions about it. I agree. I also wrote down that we do--
I agree, I all had, I also wrote down that we do have an in-house graphic department. I know when we have to do emergency shutdowns, when we have to fix something at the park, you know, we were able to do bilingual signage. So I would encourage us to use our in-house graphic department, which does amazing graphics, for that because three weeks is, I believe, way too long. And then I know we have Visit Escondido and they've been really good about posting recently. So I would just say like, you know, utilizing the resources we already have. I know we don't have a huge communications team, but I, to be extra, giving extra attention to this area to ensure that businesses are not negatively impacted and just being as flexible as possible to work with them as we discover challenges and unintended consequences. I'm, I'm sorry that, that the timing is impacting your business. I will make sure that I personally share about, you know, the businesses and give extra attention to Grand and personally visit your shop. I love your shop. I go there every, you know, holiday season and I'll just make sure to like uplift the businesses, especially those in that area. So I will personally do my part and spread the word and then whatever we can do, you know, to work with them so that they're feeling heard and we can find creative ways to address the challenge, just because we really can't delay it, unfortunately. Thank you.
So just a couple of things. I decided to go and have a meal on Grand today and I must say that there is an impact. The restaurant that I have eaten there before, that was much more emptier. So realistically, there is going to be an impact. I think that's unavoidable. But one thing that I must say is, at the moment, when I made my left turn onto Grand, I was coming from Escondido, heading south and I, I made a, as I was making a left, I saw all the orange, everything right there. I was like, oh man, they're closed. I was going specifically because it was, you know, to, to spend some, some money there. But then I see it and would have been really helpful for me, would have been to have one of those lighted signs, open for business. And we have those around the city. Hopefully not all of them are busy, but it would have been really helpful for me just to see it, the impact of it's all orange and shut down, but to say, open for business. And then, oh, yeah, okay. Now, I know where to park and I still had to walk a couple of blocks. It, you know, I'm a big guy, so you know, I was walking with someone, so it's kind of hard. I had to walk behind them and, you know, like that. So there is an impact. I appreciate that staff is gonna do, is doing and going to do the best they can to, to lower those impacts, to mitigate them. But I'm just wondering about a lighted sign at one of those big intersections where people will tend to turn around and be shocked if they are not aware of it or forgot for a moment and say, oh, it, they're still open. So the other thing is I appreciate the added media support outreach that the city is doing and other organizations. I would request that once the project is done, that continue for a while to help them build their businesses back up. Okay? So those are the, those are my comments for this.
I, I missed that last, why was that?
That after the project is done, the city and the staff and organizations continue to do some of that media outreach, social media and stuff, just to kind of help them rebuild what's been lost.
Got it. Again, just if I, if I may, I think this has been a joint project since day one. I think the DBA and the businesses were the ones that brought this forward initially. It was their idea, their concept and the city obviously is an integral part of that. And so the business owners, the DBA, everyone has the perfect right right now to emphasize what their status is, what their business operation model is right now and to reach out in social media and do whatever's necessary so that they can continue to have the, the patronage that they're, they're accustomed to and don't necessarily feel that it's the city's obligation to, to take that on any further than what we've been doing, but that's, that's one man's opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. We'll now move on to our next presentation, which is the Rotary Club of Escondido Grape Day Park presentation.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I? So I'm an active member of the Rotary Club of Escondido and so I'm going to, in the spirit of transparency and just because optics matter to me and I, I am, to avoid any perceived conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from the presentation.
I am also a member of that club, pay dues for that club, so I'll be also recusing myself. Thank you.
So, so a quick question. Is there more than one club that's being represented in the overall project and funding and/or fundraising and our participation?
We hope so. Because it's opened all of the Rotary Clubs in Escondido. We are the primary instigators.
Well, and if that's the case, then everyone up here is gonna have to recuse themselves because everyone's a part of Rotary. So if that's the case, I think we should re-invite our other council members to come back up here because otherwise it makes no sense to have one or no individuals sitting up here on the dais.
Well, and I also request that you get advice from city attorney because the Rotarian membership itself, not involved in the actual project, I can't believe that that would be a conflict of interest if it's disclosed, but that's a legal question.
Totally understand. And as of today, I don't believe Sunrise has been engaged in this project with you at all, have they?
Have, have we talked to Sunrise?
We've talked to them, they're not, they have not been talking to them.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to comment?
Briefly. I don't think there's any legal disqualifying interest here, so to the extent you may have other potential benefactors or contributors or donors and so forth, I don't think you run into that risk. To the extent the council members believe that they had some personal interests that they wanted to announce, then that's up to them, but you don't have any legal disqualifying interest. There's no decision. This is a presentation, so I don't see a conflict.
Understood.
Are you going to invite the others back? They can hear us. They can come back, but in my opinion, so if I feel like I have a conflicting interest and I walk away, there's no presentation because we don't have a quorum. So that, that's.
That's right.
It's kind of bogus.
Okay.
I, I am going to invite them back real quick. Hang on one second.
We did, we didn't expect this.
Oh, oh, I'll go, I'll go back.
They can.
I can, I can, I can tell that there's an invitation, but they're, they're, they're right.
Understood.
Yeah, I want to be clear that it may not be a legal disqualifying conflict, but to the extent they find that there's a conflict from their personal point of view, then that's what they're gonna do.
We are, as soon as the clerk comes back, we are.
Where'd the clerk go?
He's coming back right now.
All right.
They will not be joining us for this.
Understood. I apologize for the inconvenience. Mr. Raymond, the time is yours.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Member of the Council. Thank you for the invitation to present our Escondido Rotary Centennial Outdoor Stage Project. It's a big part of the entire celebration, which will be lasting a year. The Rotary Club of Escondido was chartered this month, one hundred years ago. I know because I was there. We will be celebrating our centennial on October twentieth. For the first time in the one hundred and thirty-six year history of this city, the president of Rotary International, a one-point-four-million-member worldwide organization, will visit our city and participate in our celebrations. And obviously, that's a big deal for Rotary, but I also think it's a big deal for this city. I'm glad she's coming. To explain more details of our project is our Rotary Centennial Project Chairman, Larry Trautner.
Thank you, Jack. As Jack said, my name's Larry Trautner and my wife and I moved here to Escondido about fifteen years ago from Solano Beach and we really like living in this city. This is a city that we enjoy much. I was chosen to be, lead this project because of my extensive experience in managing, designing construction projects across the US. I worked for over thirty-six years with one of the largest engineering and construction companies in the world, Bechtel Corporation. We started working on this project about a year and a half ago with the idea being that we would have this project underway this month for the centennial. We first met with city staff last May, at May of 2023, to discuss this possible project and it was, and we were, at that time, we were looking at the Maple Street Plaza location and we were told that that's not, we were, I guess you might call it, what's the word? I guess encouraged not to use that site because of the, there were some legal issues associated with the property next door. In September of last year, more than a year ago, we met again with the city, city staff and this time we recommended that we have a pro, we put the, the stage on the, on a concrete pad that is near the west end of the grape green, that is planned, a concrete pad there, that would be near Lyric Court. And we're again discouraged by the city from using that site because there's an extensive number of critical utilities underground underneath that concrete pad. So early this year, we came up with a third site, which we think is the perfect site, which is shown on this, on this view graph here, picture, which is behind the museum and next to the Center for the Arts classrooms. It's, this stage would be located in the underutilized area of the park and it is response to several comments on the Grape Day Master Plan that were received by the community when that was developed. We, it'll be near the new cla, the new restrooms, if you can see those on the map, we had up there, just below the, the blue dot. And it'll be located across from the park, the food truck parks, parking lot, parking pads. And there's also trees there to provide shade for people watching and attending the concerts. We engaged an architect, a well-known local architect, to design a stage that would blend in with the environment. The, next slide? The, what they did is we used the open trellis design that is common in the center, in City Hall and the Center for the Arts and we're using City Hall green for the color. And we've also, the next slide, we've extended the stage roof out ten feet for performances at night so that the lighting would show back onto the performers from the front instead of on the top, which is suggested by the city for, the city arts group. We believe it's reached an optimum solution here that maximizes community input and is within our budget. We work closely with our architect, with the estimator that city uses for Grape Day Master Park, a plan estimated, estimates, as well as the center staff and local steel manufacturer and also a certified, registered structural engineer from the city to help us streamline and reduce some of the conservatism in early design so that we could afford the project. And we now have it down to a place where the step, the, the estimate is within our budget and we've retained full planned functionality. Rotary chose this gift as it represents a golden opportunity to give the community something representative of our motto, service above self. The five clubs in Escondido over the last hundred years have contributed and performed hundreds of projects, have donated tens of thousands of hours of labor, volunteer hours and donated millions of hours to, millions of dollars to local charities, local schools and for scholarships for high school seniors. So our current combined membership is over a hundred and forty professionals in the city. We realize that the city will have to review construction drawings, they'll have to do inspections, they'll have to help us with right of ways for construction, but we work diligently to try to minimize the hard costs that the city would actually incur. We, the simplicity of the design and the selective materials represents, we believe, will help reduce future maintenance costs. We plan to maximize use of off-site fabrication of the steel so that there'll be less onsite construction work. And we also believe that the stage would generate revenue for the city because the center, when we were working with them, said they would perform, there are, there are, there are venues that want to perform outside and to a larger audience than the fifteen-hundred that currently can have in this, in the concert hall. So in the end, our hope is that we, the city will see this gift as an investment whose benefits to the community far exceed the cost that the city may incur. With that, I'm gonna turn this over to James Wright, who's gonna talk about opportunities for use of the, for the facility.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening. Again, my name is James Wright and I am the CEO of A Step Beyond, a nonprofit after-school program based here in Escondido at the California Center for the Arts. I've had the great honor of serving the Escondido community for the last four and a half years, leading a team that's preparing over two-hundred-and-sixty underserved youth for success in college, career and life using a program featuring dance, academics and family services. I'm also a proud member of the Escondido Rotary Club. ASB leases dance studio and classroom space at the California Center for the Arts to conduct its programming. And as a long-term tenant of the Center for the Arts, I stand before you today on behalf of A Step Beyond to say that ASB fully supports the Rotary Centennial Stage Project. We believe the stage would not only provide great opportunities for the youth and families that we serve, but also provide tremendous benefits to the community, to other nonprofits in our city and the entire community. First, there is a lack of performance venues in our city, particularly outdoor stages. The Rotary Centennial Stage would fill that gap, providing another performance space option to so many nonprofits in the city, including A Step Beyond. The venue would accommodate up to two-thousand-five-hundred attendees. It would draw name entertainers. It would be a space where attendees would even have room to dance and enjoy the shows in an outdoor setting. And in fact, this Rotary Centennial Stage would actually replace a stage that previously existed in Grape Day Park. Moreover, this stage will create a greater sense of belonging in our community. It will be a place where our residents can come together to enjoy arts and culture and each other. It will create greater access to the performing arts for our youth and the research is clear that performing arts improves academic and social and emotional outcomes for our youth. But this stage is not just about a space for performing arts. The Rotary Centennial Stage will also be a space for weddings, pageants, school events, business gatherings and so much more. The stage will generate economic impact for our city at a time when revenue is really needed and these are just a few of the many benefits to the community that the Rotary Centennial Stage will have. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Debbie Staniel.
Thank you, James. Hi, my name is Debbie Stanley. I am a nonprofit consultant that works with nonprofits all over the world, help raise money for their important missions. I am here today as a proud member of the Escondido Rotary Club and I'm doing this project pro bono as a proud resident of Escondido. Some of you may remember that I ran First Night Escondido for a number of years, so I know firsthand how impactful these community gatherings can be and how they can truly change the complexion of Grape Day Park into one more positive, more filled with joy and filled with more families. Now, this project, as you can see, is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. We have looked at this hard and we are confident in our numbers. Now, yeah, that's a lot of money. Now, the good news is through the generosity of our Rotarians, we've already raised half of that. From Rotarians that have been here twenty, thirty, forty, at in some cases fifty years, who have dedicated their time, their talent, their treasures to make this city a better place. But the bad news is we've had to put a halt on all of that, a halt on our fundraising, a halt on all of our momentum because, well, indecision. We are one-hundred percent confident. We are 100% confident in our ability to raise the rest of the money. We are also confident that we will see on this Rotary Centennial Stage the same energy that we saw at First Night Escondido. Larry has looked at this project from every angle, and we are confident in our numbers, and we are confident in his ability to bring this project home. We are confident in our approach. We are seeking your confidence in us to bring this project as a gift to the city of Escondido. I now turn it over to Jack Raymond for any final comments.
Thank you, Debbie. Well, I guess my final comment is whether or not the city council is going to be able to vote on this project. Because if there's conflicts of interest of more than-
So tonight, the answer to your question is yes. Tonight, we cannot vote on it. Later on in the agenda for future agenda, I'm going to request the city manager to come back with the numbers that I had mentioned to you previously so the council could vote on it.
Okay, no, I understand that. I understand, but I'm talking about voting at the end of the line-
There's still three of us standing.
-because of the conflict, okay. Could we request at least an indication of approval of concept?
So in my, in my remarks when you were done, I'll just go ahead and say them now, but I was going to say, although there won't be an official vote tonight, I was going to let my colleagues know that you all were looking for support of concept.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think that what we were seeing, saw tonight was a little bit small for the type of activities you're talking about. Don't, where's that model at?
(laughter)
Oh, okay. All right. So it's larger than that? Okay. I'm a little slow. I just wanted to make sure. No, I got it, Larry. I got it.
Is the stage essentially the same as the theater stage?
36 by 24, and the Center for the Arts believes that you could get 2,500 people on the grass outside of that.
I was being facetious. I apologize.[806.51][806.51](laughter) I'm, hey, there are better jokes than Gallows jokes used to be, so that's all I can say. No, it's, it actually looks great. It's a phenomenal presentation. Obviously, the passion that everyone feels behind this is palpable, so there's nothing wrong with that. The design, the original couple of designs we saw wasn't too much of a fan of. This one I really like a lot. I think it's fantastic. I think it'll have great utilization at that particular occasion. I have a bunch of questions that'll probably come later on if and when we have the presentation to council in regards to some of the comments that you guys made about fundraising and for the city, et cetera. But the question would be like, well, who ultimately is going to be managing the calendar? And who's actually going to be overseeing, directing, collecting, expending, all those different things that will come into play for the different artists and/or activities that could potentially be participating there? We just had a phenomenal event here two Saturdays ago. Park was packed. We had, they had two portable stages, I believe, for the, for the Independence Day Festival and celebration, and they always have dance program after dance program after dance program filling those up. So the thought is, okay, are they going to have access to that? And if so, do they go through the city for that? Do they go through Center for the Arts? How is that going to be organized? So there are probably some managerial-type questions that we may have that may need to be answered and/or delineated, but I, for one, would, would love to, you know, see and hear from the city as to how this could potentially work, you know, what the, the potential cost could be to the city on an ongoing basis, et cetera, and how that might come, come to fruition, or what would be necessary, I should say, for it to come to fruition. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for being here tonight. Yes to everything he just said. I do love this particular design. I love that it matches the current characteristics of City Hall. I think it adds more to the art center in Grape Day Park. I am supportive of the concept. I would love to get this across the finish line as soon as possible. I will be asking the city manager to come back for a future agenda item to present on exactly what Councilmember Morosco said. But yes, I'm supportive. Again, thank you for being here. And, sir?
Yeah, I think, I think my colleagues said it perfectly. I think, you know, there is a lot of enthusiasm here. I saw the first concept several months ago, and I thought it was really exciting. Again, I think the color is great. I think the use of it as well, you know, especially with all the festivals, all the, all the events that go on in Grape Day Park, I think this is, this would be really good for that. I have the same concerns as Councilman Morosco, so I think we just need to get more information on it. I know that the, the city staff has expressed some, some questions as well that I've echoed, so I think it'd be really good to, to come back and get more information, have, as the mayor said, have the city manager come back with, at some point, and so we could get the answers to those questions. So, but thank you so much for the presentation. Again, you know, I think, I don't know if anybody here has seen Zoolander. I think that was a great reference to, the stage doesn't really, how are we going to fit all the children on there? So, said, looks like a center for ants. So anyways, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
I never said I was original, so.[1046.08][1046.08](applause)
What? That's what I was just going to say. Report out of closed session. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
(inaudible)
Did we lose one? Oh, there he is.
The city council heard one matter in closed session this evening. All council members were present. The other agenda item has been continued. In the matter of Warner versus City of Escondido, the council approved by a vote of 5 to 0 the settlement of the action, the final terms of which will be available in an executed settlement agreement from the office of the city attorney and/or the city clerk. Nothing further to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to non-agenda public comments.
Yes, Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Becky Rapp, and tonight I wanted to share with you a recent article that was published in the UT titled "Smoke-Free Apartment Living Is Best For Everyone in San Diego County." The article describes secondhand smoke as the smoke or vapor exhaled by the tobacco user. Secondhand smoke kills 50,000 people every year in the U.S. and contains over 7,000 chemicals, including 70 known to be cancer-causing. Secondhand smoke can be inhaled in a variety of ways, but the most common way is in your own home, a home that shares walls and ventilation systems like apartment complexes and condos. This takes place as one neighbor smokes and the vapor then travels through the windows. 65% of the air in one home can travel into the adjoining home, causing the nonsmoker neighbor to suffer the consequences. So I bring this to your attention as there is a solution to the problem, and the city of Carlsbad has led the way by implementing a policy making multi-unit housing 100% smoke-free. When surveyed, the overwhelming majority of San Diego residents support smoke-free housing policies. Property managers, healthcare providers, law enforcement, and environmental advocates also agree that smoke-free housing is a great solution. So I ask you today to consider creating this smoke-free housing policy as every resident has the right to live a smoke-free life. Thank you.
No further public comments.
Okay. Move on to the consent calendar. Items 1 through 6 are on consent, and I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar as is, and have a second. Thank you.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
For future agenda, I'd like to request an agenda item to bring back the figures for the stage.
And just for clarity, we'll be bringing back not just the operational consideration, but what the city investment needs to be. And, and I will just share with the council that one of the things we're going to have to discuss with the group is the issue of prevailing wage, because I know they've calculated a budget, but because of the level of investment that is going to be required for the city, the city attorney and I have concerns about what that will mean, and so I just want to make sure that's on the record, that they've calculated some costs, but based on the scope of the project, as you well know, once we invest city dollars in a project, that does trigger some, some costs associated with that, right? And, and they may have calculated that in, but it is an unknown when they generated their budget costs.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Well, can I get a second to that? Thank you. Perfect. Anybody have anything else they want to add to an agenda? No, 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 no? Okay. Councilmember Subcommittee reports. I'll be brief. We had a Sandag Board of Directors meeting. Nothing substantial came out of that. And then it was, we unveiled the Washington Park, the skate park mural, which was a ton of fun, got to meet the artist, take pictures, and I just want to say I love all the art that's happening in the city of Escondido.
All right. As always, you know, I'd like to take time to speak with constituents. I think it's really important to have regular hours for people to meet. We had, one of the things I've been working on is working with at-risk youth and then trying to collaborate with different organizations that do that. As a teacher, it's super important to me, so getting in contact with, with the police department as well. So I know that they have the, the program called eGrip. It's something that I really wanted to start looking to explore and something that I was talking to Chief Arso about. Had a meeting with the CEO of the Clean Energy Alliance. The meeting was on Thursday. Just went over, you know, what it is that we're working on, nothing substantial at this point, and as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving you. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, thank you. I also attended the Washington Park Murals, which was really fun, and then I got to speak to some high school students after that who were doing a voter registration drive. I, on Monday, visited the 4th grade classes at Lincoln Elementary, which was extra special and fun, considering that I am a former Lincoln Elementary student, and I was so impressed with the students. They have been working for weeks, learning about government in 4th grade. They did a mock town hall, and so they all came dressed up. They used microphones. They had prepared questions, and they did not give me easy questions. They asked about homelessness. They asked about the future of water. I was really impressed with them, and they greeted me amazingly and then told me that, you know, thank you for visiting. It was just so fun, and I'm just so impressed with what's happening at Lincoln Elementary. So kudos to the teachers preparing our future generation of leaders. I attended last week a business mixer, mega mixer, at the Center for the Arts, and I also attended the Hispanic Heritage Awards Ceremony and celebrated some of my friends who received awards there. It was a wonderful event, well-attended. Let's see. And I also, on behalf of the mayor, I filled in for presenting a recognition to the Arjona family, who I've known for 18 years. It was extra special to be able to celebrate with them at the Salvation Army's Inspirational Community Champion Breakfast Recognition. And then lastly, I supported one of the new coffee shops that opened in Escondido, Good Source Coffee. Go check them out. I was there for their grand opening day. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
I have a couple of things that I'd like to report. I was also at the Hispanic Heritage Awards and the mega mixer was great, extremely well-attended. I also was invited by Sandag leadership to have a meet and greet with the mayor-elect, at this point, the new mayor of Tijuana, on Friday. That was a nice opportunity. I attended a California jobs first meeting for our region in Encinitas on Friday also. And Sunday, I had the distinct privilege and honor, I was invited to be part of those in attendance with the Honor Flight coming in from DC. So to be there and to be able to experience so many people and see our, our veterans coming down the escalators, the current military on the side saluting, the music, the emotion is such a powerful moment for the Honor Flight, once they come back, and, and it was just, it was just a very powerful moment for me. I was able to do that on Sunday. That'll conclude my, my remarks.
Just real quick, Washington Park mural, I got to see them. I did not get to stay for the event. I had a conflicting memorial service to attend. Since we always talk about the big, important things that happen, the week passed and the week coming, it was Ms. Martinez's birthday this past week, so happy birthday to you. On, tomorrow will be my last Regional Solid Waste Association meeting. Those happen on a quarterly basis, so it'll be the last one to attend, and after 14 years of attending those. And on Saturday, I believe, still at Fire Station Number One, at 11 o'clock, they're having the fire truck dedication, the, the big rig dedication, 11 o'clock. Again, Fire Station Number One on Quince, and that, those are my remarks.
Sir?
The City Escondido Public Art Commission is proud to announce the release of Escondido Expressions Traffic Signal Box Call for Artists. The program is designed to enhance and bring art to Escondido's neighborhoods and commercial areas by transforming traffic signal boxes into works of art. The goal is to highlight local artists, deter graffiti, and expand the city's public art by creating scenes that reflect the vibrancy and diversity of local neighborhoods. Full details are available on our website, but there's some upcoming important dates. Friday, October 4th at 5:00 PM is the questions deadline. Wednesday, October 9th is the, the answers will be posted, and Friday, October 15th at 5:00 PM is the submission deadline. We really encourage artists to apply and get involved in our program.
Other public comments?
None.
Meeting is adjourned.